Thank you, everyone, for being here. We have a full board minus one. Mr. Edson is excused absence for the evening. We were probably noticing, I think, Kate and Conrad. And we're going to lead off tonight. I'm going to hand it over straight away to Superintendent Farnham for presentation.
It looks like we had a mix up in location. I can go to number three. It's just very quickly.
Okay with the board?
Yes.
Okay, so moving to item number three, just a very quick rundown on some of the communications that have been going on for the April referendum. Just prepared a very quick slide deck to go over some of the main efforts that have been done so far. This slide captures a number of the flyers, FSQs, mailers that have been sent out with all the different information in the drawings. We've also recorded some video presentations that are on the website now, so people can just click on those and get basically the same experience as a actual presentation. And we continue to be available for people on schedule tours. And getting a lot of feedback on the mailers from people who've already taken out and contacting us with questions. So we've been answering a lot of questions since the mailer went out in February. This is that example.
Where's the questions that have been getting?
Oh, you name it.
Yeah, anyone more frequent than than others?
I mean, there's always financial questions. People are always curious about the tax impact and the duration of the loan. That question's come up a few times, so we tried to get the mailers out there and more and more of our visuals. Everything from tennis courts, field, what are you doing with the fields that are going to be disrupted? Timing timelines are big when people want to get idea why it would be completed, but really it's every possible thing you can imagine. We try to feel better question on it. Very, very diverse.
No, the FQs on the website have been generated from many of those questions. So anytime we get a question, we put it out as an FQ.
So this was the early February mailer. And this was the fact sheet mailer from March. So a lot, it's, it's hard because you're putting some of the same information out every time, but you always try to organize it a little bit differently, try to provide some different information for the different mailers as they go out. We also have these flyers up in the school so that people can pull a flyer if they want. It often looks very similar to what they get in the mail. That was our mid-March example. Our display boards, we have one not in here anymore. We got that one out to somewhere else, but we do have one right outside Kate's desk. So that's the display board with the place for people to take flyers that they're interested in. And we have our website. We continue to update it regularly, trying to get as much information out there. And like Jeff said, we'll add information when we get a question that we don't feel has been thoroughly addressed somewhere, we'll, we'll get that up on the FAQ or as a presentation. So right now people can get information a number of different ways if they want. So just see an FAQ, they can go to more narrative based FAQs, but if they want presentations, we have slide decks that they can go through slide decks. And we actually have recorded presentations now available for people. So project highlights, again, it's 136.2 million revised and reduced project. Reduced it dramatically based on the feedback we got from the community and from the surveys last spring. Still with the goal of getting to one building to improve our safety, better instructional spaces and address operational efficiency. We blew up this version of it so people could see a little bit more just the impact at the north buildings, so it's a little more clear than that. Thirty thousand view picture where we tried to show the south campus changes this way, you can actually get a better feel for what could very likely be where these departments end up. I'm always hesitant to have anybody draw two conclusions that are, this is final, none of this is final. But these are the tentative ideas of what we would do if we're passed with the renovation areas. So you get a feel for those. All the academics that would be in the new wing and these all the other courses would have their own designated areas throughout the building with good renovations, upgrade those spaces. So that's the summary of the one building plan. I will read that to you. Advice and reduced breakdown of the cost. This is a question Lindsay that we get a fair number asking how the costs break down. So this we've put out there in a few of the places to get a feel for what the costs, how they add up to the 136.2. And then the mill rate. Giving everything we can to make sure everybody understands that includes all of the costs, principal and interest. You can see, same thing we made clear the last time around. And again, the levy effect is almost cut in half from where they were in November. And there's the timeline that people ask about. If everything were to go as planned, we'd be looking at 2028, all would go and we'd be able to move into the building completed. Still would be some work going on, but that would be the time that we could actually start taking advantage of a new facility. And that's it. Any questions?
Just a reminder to the board of the challenge that exists of spring break bumping up against our April first voting day. So just to ensure that everyone gets out to vote, those people in your sphere, if you can have conversations, just to encourage them to get into vote and make sure that what counts would be appreciated.
Thank you. And we can go back to the second agenda item, our peer mentor physical education presentation. I believe we have Mr. Smart Check and
Mrs. Martin.
This is Martin, sir.
And Ms. Shaw.
And a couple of students. So we'll let you come on up and introduce yourselves.
You guys can come right up here.
The word.
You want to stand somewhere you can see the screen if you need to use it as a cue.
I'm Emily Martin. I am a teacher here, and this is the first year that Mr. Smart Check and I, along with Mary, are teaching the co-peer mentor PE. This class description is, it has a, a group of special needs students that have IEPs and Bible fours that have specially designed by Ed along with regular kids that are their peer helpers. We brought some of the peer helpers here today to kind of speak about the new class. We are super excited about it. We love the class. We think it's a big hit and we're really excited to share, share with you guys.
Yeah, the only thing just really with that class you mentioned is part of it, we're really trying to give our peers, which would be our students with special needs, a place to really grow in their social skills and also develop those skills that they can take with them when they leave. And then we also have a great opportunity for peer mentors or general education students to really grow in that social emotional learning and also learn to develop how to build those relationships and support. And then while they're developing different ways for peers to be active and find ways to succeed, they're actually learning how to do that eventually for themselves to change activities as well.
So here's kind of an agenda of just the daily, what we do. We just set one with a dance unit, which was one of our favorites of the semester. So the first about 10, 15 minutes, we talk about with our peers what we're going to do for the day. So here are the expectations. Here's the agenda. So we meet with them before the kids with special needs come in. We talk about like modifications that maybe need to be made, and we just kind of give them an overview of today. Once special needs come, needs, students come in, we're paired, they're paired in groups. We usually switch groups every week, every other week, and they have a student they get to know. And we start with always a walk talk. As Mr. Smart Check said, social emotional learning. We talk about things that what was your favorite thing you did over the weekend? What was your favorite class last semester? What's your favorite thing to eat for supper? Whatever it is, and we get to know the kids, get to know them, make friends, and it's kind of fun. It's, it's, you're more likely to be productive and really motivate them if you get to know the students. So that's kind of the first, first bit of class. Then, you know, trial and error at the beginning of the year. Mr. Smart Check and I made a station for every student. We're like, this is great. The kids are like, whoa, that's too many stations. We kind of came to the conclusion that three or four stations is really kind of the, the best perfect scenario. They can rotate around their stations. They get to choose. We also have this up on the board. So maybe nonverbal students can come up and they can point to what activity they like the best, or what's their favorite hobby, or what activity they want to do first. So that communication piece is there as well. So this is kind of just a snapshot of what we do every single day in our class.
And as you see at the bottom, I know we talked about, because we came in for our curriculum with the physical education, you can see that that's that learning that we're talking about, actually learning those specific skills where we hit our pillars. And then those are also the national standards. We do try to make sure that they know that every day with what we're going to be focused on for those days.
So this is a picture of just the board and the social emotional learning student picking, you know, pointing at what, what it is that they like. I think it's taco toppings on that one. Just have a picture of just the walk talk.
Yeah, just, this is actually a really cool thing that Ms. Martin kind of talked about when we first started, but she mentioned that the students really do love to break it down at the end of class. So at every class, usually it'll be one of our peers, they'll share, maybe it's something we do in specifically in a unit, or it's really their favorite thing. One of our peers was awesome. She even said wrestling was your favorite. That's a really, really cool thing. And that's kind of our chance to, you know, one last goodbye and, and see you later. And then actually they'll head out of here. So we'll head out and then Mr. Farnham, you can scroll to the next slide. This is our other opportunity for our peer mentors to really develop in their understanding. These are our depth of knowledge questions that we provide. We do talk about them every single class, usually the last 10 minutes until they're going to go and change. And it helps us really develop that knowledge at a deeper base. You know, some of those are right. You're discussing what you learned, but then really you're looking, this one specifically fitness testing, right? How are you going to fitness test and provide the best thing for whatever peer that you're working with in that day?
All right. So I'm Lauren Harless, and I decided to join this class because I wanted to see like if I would be able to work well with kids who have special needs. And I really made, have made so many different connections, especially with my peer friends and especially the kids who have special needs. My favorite activity was probably doing the parachute because everyone was involved, everyone was having fun, and it really just brought a smile to my face, and I knew I made an impact on their days.
My name's Marlene Yergi, and definitely hands down my favorite class of the semester. I really enjoyed working with kids with special needs, one of the peers I have known since kindergarten. And so for him to light up every time he would see me would just brighten my day if I was having a bad day. And another thing for me is I'm a junior and sometimes I would come down to South in the mornings for resource, and the kids would be coming in, they're Milena, and it was just so cool to see them get super happy. And I agree with Lauren, my favorite activity was parachute. Every kid loved it, and just to build connections with them was super awesome. And I'm so super grateful I got the opportunity to take the class. And I'm recommending it to all of my friends that are most of my friends are taking it next year. So super glad I got to take the class.
Any questions?
I have a question, if I may. Do you deal with the special needs kids that are above graduation stage?
We, you know, unfortunately, we don't. Usually they're into the community.
Yeah, there's a couple that will pop in there as their schedule allows, but most of them because we're in the afternoon, and most of them are out on job sites or in the community and working on their vocational.
Do you deal with that through the summer also, or just the school year?
It's just a class offer during the school year.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions. So, so is it like just the breadth of special needs, like from all levels of need that are able to be a part of this class? Okay.
Yes.
And then my other question is for the mentors, do you guys get PE credit for this, or do you just, you do?
Yeah, it counts as a regular.
I think it's just challenging in different ways. A regular PE class is a little bit more physically challenging, and this is more of modifying and a little bit more cognitive. And it's, it's really cool to see. It's really cool to see like how mature they are and how they grow throughout the semester.
It's definitely like creative too. Like we have to come up with creative ways to modify each activity and exercise that we're doing. And it's really cool when we come up with something fun and creative based on once you get to know the student and know what they like, then we can modify it to what they like, and then they have even more fun, which is really cool.
And that's fantastic.
Excuse me. A more positive experience in the end for all of us.
Can you give an example of that modification that you've done?
Um, so for Matthew, I'm really close with Matthew, and he loves bouncy balls, like bouncing on a bouncy ball, and then Imagine Dragons. So for our by Imagine Dragons. And so one of our things was like the entire song, Matthew was bouncing on the ball and had a huge smile on his face. And so once you get to know the student and then modify it like we did for Matthew, he just let up and loved it. It was his favorite unit.
That's great. I know I have no authority in here, but I teach special needs. And I, my class was so huge, I didn't know what to do with them. And so I caught them ballroom dancing, and they absolutely loved it. I have a couple of questions. One, do either of you and maybe any of the other students who are involved as, as mentors, do either of you have any interest in one day going on to be teachers?
I do. I said, going, I went away water, and I'm going to double major course, special education and early childhood education.
Because it kind of sounds like. Just Sam, just keep her name, just Sam. And then the second, I mean, this so clearly is, is such a fantastic fit in PE. But I'm just wondering if there are other opportunities in other departments throughout the school?
Yeah, so we have 2D design and 3D design sections right now, and we are working with the family consumer department to kind of get some kind of like
That's where I was headed.
And then ultimately, we'd also like to get in with like the tech department as well and across the board. But we do have our currently, and then family consumers coming maybe within the next year or two.
Fantastic. I love that. Okay.
We're very excited about it.
Wonderful.
You may have mentioned this, but is the ratio one to one in terms of special?
We found the ideal ratio is like three to one. That way, you know, kids are absent, things move around. It provides opportunity for more connections. But it's also just based on, sometimes you get a couple of kids that are just extra, and then we have our kids with disabilities that sometimes there's only a handful of them in certain sections, and then the ratios are a little bit more lopsided. But the ideal ratio we found is like three to one.
How many total were in class?
Anywhere between 25 and 30-ish.
Right now, we have a little bit of an overload. It's a little bit larger ratio.
How much, how much do the mentors kind of guide what happens in the, in the classes and kind of the curriculum for the class?
Yeah, you know, we, with the help of Mary, Mary is like the new room specialist, she really has helped us through. Mr. Smart Check and I usually kind of pick the unit. We have sat down, looked at our calendar, we create the PowerPoint presentation or not PowerPoint, but the Google presentation. And we do try to early off, early on, give ideas of modifications. We put different slides up. Here's how you modify activities. So we kind of stir the boat, stir the ship. But we also want to give them some creativity to put in their own spin or their own ideas, because they have really creative ideas. So we kind of tried to, at the beginning, give you guys a little bit more direction, but then as we go out throughout the semester, like the dance creativity, 100% bounce.
Sounds like mentors. Well done. So.
Also, to add on to that, one of the things like for an exit ticket, after we did like the skating unit, was we had to come up with our own like warm up activities for like the main part and then closing activity. So that was one of our assignments too. So that was an opportunity where we got to work in our grips and say, hey, what can we take from what we know that they like and what we think they could like and put it into a class? And then Mrs. Martin, Ms. Smart Check took those ideas, and the next class we implemented them. So that was another way we got to be creative too.
We called it a student plan day. We tried to do that every now and then, just to kind of get them that creativity, but you know, given some direction.
And those really were, well, later in the unit, but usually our days, units are somewhere between three to four days, right? So on the first one or two, they see it, and then they're able to three and four, just like you said with the ice.
That's fantastic. I don't have any questions as, as I appreciate board members have already asked them for me. But I, but I do want to first comment that it was my very good fortune to be in the building. One day I was with Adam, and he said, hey, take a walk with me. And we walked down to the gym and see where the parachute activity was going on. Just, I think, all around level of joy, if that would sum it up, from, from mentors and, and others. I mean, everyone involved was highly enthusiastic, great fun, and you could just see it was joy. So keep up the great work. It's a, it's a cool growth.
And I mean, the three educators in front of us, they, they represent everything that we hold dearly as like educators of Arrowhead High School. Recognizing needs, never satisfied, and just always focus on students and how can we, you know, build leaders and then also help every single student. So like Mary and Emily, all on their own, created the idea for this course. When we brought Newton on, we couldn't have found a more perfect fit to have Newton be a partner in it. And then in terms of just the concept of the class, like when you look at the peer helper reflection questions, assess how modifying fitness testing can enhance participation for students with different types of disabilities. That's an interview question for a teacher to answer, like not something that we would like, think that like we were going to be teaching students at some point in the high standards that Emily, Mary and Newton have for the mentors is just like, no, like we're going to be reflecting on this every single time. Summarize a process, the process of conducting a fitness test for a student with mobile mobility impairments. A lot of students learn about their own fitness and what that might look like. They're having to take it outside themselves and now consider somebody else too. So you're going to do a great job. You're learning a ton, like, like this is really high level stuff. But again, all the credits of these folks here, that's really incredible, though.
That's great.
I, I love the fact that this is not just a PE class, it's problem solving, interpersonal skills. There's so much that you guys are taking away from this and that you're building your own way of thinking outside of the box. And, and yeah, hats off to the educators who think outside the box. So thank you very much. All three of you. That's very cool.
That's awesome. I hope we see the wire. We're going to move on to public comments. And since I see a couple of faces I haven't seen before, I am going to kind of read the rules of engagement for the public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak to the board must be present and register on the sign up form. A three minute time limit is enforced. Public comments is only accepted during this agenda item. Sharing of minutes with another person addressing the board is not permitted. Speakers should address the board as a whole, not individual members, and should remain polite and respectful. Only the board president may respond to comments or questions. The board president has the authority to ask another board member or administrator to respond. Board members will not respond to public comments unless designated as a board president. The board president has the authority to cease any conversation at any time for any reason. Public comments will be taken under advisement if public comments are in regard to an agenda item. When the board discusses that particular item during the meeting, the board may or may not address the comments and questions raised by the public. Only the board will discuss and/or take action. There will be notices in communications during the time of agenda topics, and speakers are not immune from legal consequences related to the content of their speech. So this evening, we have two on our signup sheet. Our next speaker is Jane Owen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and the audience and on YouTube. Primarily, I would like to talk about the referendum. This is the first time I've heard that the referendum amount includes interest. So I'm surprised it not clear on that. For the public, there are other costs involved. We were aware that principal is 136.2 million. Interest would be 37 to 75 million, deficits 33.9 million, loss of state aid, $11 million spent already is almost a million. Soft cost, which is about 20% of principal, is 27.2 million, looking at a subtotal to the taxpayers of 246 to 284 million dollars. I think the public needs to be aware of that. The original options to the public a year ago were maintenance of 53 million, a light rebuild of 142, a rental of 153, or a heavy rebuild of 172 million. I don't agree with raising south campus to save $17 million and spend 240 some million dollars in other costs. As we saw it, what they call the investment renovation, 39.7 million, addition 67.3 million, site modification 17.5, pool renovation expansion 8.6, raise and site restoration, 3 million for the total of 136.2. On a side note with the pool, and I disclosed before, and I will say again, I'm a longtime competitive swimmer. Lake Country Phoenix that has been running lessons in the pool for approximately 10 years for Arrowhead has said for the last two years to the board and staff at Arrowhead, is my understanding, then Aitling Pool will not address the option to get big meets, bigger meets, more than what is offered now. Right now, they invite for one weekend a year. It's two separate meets on separate days. It would have to go to an Aitling Pool with separate diving well, which is not in the plans. It's interesting to note that a year ago, the pool was planned to be 6.2 billion, is now 8.6 million. How in the world that goes up 30% one year? Doesn't make sense to me, and I would like an explanation on that. I don't think Arrowhead has the background on that to answer that question. I think that involves bringing in VJS as well as all the different pool technical experts. I will only say about some emails released in the last week that I'm very surprised. I don't want to go past that. It's communications within to and from Arrowhead. And I don't find it to be professional, respectful and appropriate to the realms of the different positions and the people involved. And that's all I'm going to say about that.
Thank you. Again, I'm going to remind you on the three minute timeout location.
Okay.
We're, we're beyond at this point.
I will wrap up with, I would like to see people at Arrowhead do more to earn the public's respect and trust. I've seen different things from people not prepared with numbers to not the best and highest use of stat doing when we have our highest people doing traffic duty to advertising at public libraries, which my understanding is not in compliance with statute 946.12. And a myriad of other behavior that I don't find the best representation of Arrowhead, and I would like to see some changes to make it more positive. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we will now move into our consent agenda portion of a meeting. At this point, we have board meeting minutes from January 15. The consent agenda also includes bill permit reports for both January and February. A donations list as well as a personnel report. So I'll leave this up to the board. If there's anything you want to separate out for individual conversation. Otherwise, I would turn this over to member Angely for her reading of the donations report.
Thank you, President Schubert. First, in the donations, as of January 31st, from Data Financial, Jim Massey donated to the auto program, a 2013 Kia Sport Utility. Thank you very much for that. February 22nd, February twenty second from Vapor Blast Manufacturing Company to our art program, two pallets of steel, value of two thousand dollars. And uh February twenty fourth of this year, Tomahawk Tomahawk Manufacturing Incorporated, again to our auto program, a twenty nineteen Ford van. So thank you very much to all of those folks.
Two pellets of steel might have gone off the dome.
I'm just saying, that's very possible. Yep.
Okay, so at this at this time, I'm looking for a motion for uh an approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
After you, sir. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. So we will move on to the first of our committee reports uh with Chairwoman Herr for curriculum.
Thank you, President. This was from January, since we didn't have a February meeting. So we're going back a ways. At our January curriculum committee meeting, we discussed the social studies textbooks, which uh several board members had signed up to review specific books, um just to get a feel for what our kids are learning. Uh we talked about that. The social studies um department had a good representation of people at our meeting and we shared our opinions on the books. Uh some of the members felt they were uh, there was a perceived bias in a number of the books. And Ms. Cosetta pointed out that all books are inherently biased, uh since they are written by authors with their own perspectives, which is probably the case. And uh we were told that the textbooks often serve as a supplemental material that the books aren't the main um materials used in class apparently these days. So some of the thoughts we had were, why are we spending so much on textbooks if we're not even using them the majority of the time? But that's another issue. But what came about from that discussion? Oh, that was in our next meeting. I'll talk about that later. So we reviewed our textbooks and uh let's see, okay. And then um that took most of the meeting and then Sue presented the director's report, which included a review of the upcoming professional development on January twentieth, as well as um upcoming plans for state accountability testing. And we talked about Bill Banks, a teaching strategist who we did invite to an upcoming meeting, and that's going to be in April. So that's in the works. And then we move on to the February report. Okay, well, actually, I should have um mentioned from our prior meeting that we did discuss developing a policy about bias um regarding the textbooks. And if certain things are being taught in the social studies area on topics that are current, we develop a policy that both sides of an issue are taught. For example, climate change was one of the things that we mentioned. So that is still something that's in the works. So um then anyhow, our next meeting was on February twentieth. And we had the physical education department give a presentation and a few of those people were here tonight. And that was really interesting. Um they discussed the pillars of learning. And another thing that came up was um we have been talking about making um athletics a credit for FIAE. And we asked their opinion about that at that time, and they think that's a bad idea, that we should not give credit for football players in lieu of a FIAE um credit, because there's different things taught in the FIAE department regarding the five pillars of physical education that are missing from athletics. So that was kind of interesting. I did, I never even thought of that perspective when we had that meeting. Um and then we had a, well, that took up most of the meeting. And then we had a lengthy discussion on the weighting of student grade point averages and class rank. And Sue, if you want to handle that one, you're well versed in that more so than myself.
Yes, so we just reviewed since the Act ninety five um law has gone into effect. We have just completed or we're about to complete, no, just completed our first semester uh with the new weights. And so we revisited sort of the why behind the weighted um GPA for advanced placement classes, A B classes. We reviewed the fact that we also moved into a twelve point scale where students get uh different um points for plus and minuses. So previously, we just had a four, three, two, one uh scale for A, B, C and D. And what that did to um explode the rank of it, especially among uh among those uh in the top quarter. Um so we um just simply identified kind of the mutual wise for for the direction we were headed. Talked through some of the um questions that we were getting from um from parents and students. And um we'll keep our eye on those GPAs. We reviewed them. Students have access now to their rank. They did at that point or they were just about to get access to their rank. Um the students will get an update.
So, yeah, and some people won't be happy and some will going forward. Yeah, it's.
The hard part is the law went into effect without warning. There was no like. They should have said four years from now, have this in place, so that everybody starts on the same level playing field instead of starting when kids are in the middle of their high school career. So that, there's just no way you can do that and not have it create a lot of implications.
The law indicated that it had to be in place for this class of twenty twenty five.
Yeah. We'll see how things go. And then um there were a few items that got moved because this took a lot of time. The FIAE presentation was pretty lengthy and then the grades discussion. So the block schedule implementation update and professional development preview agenda were moved to a future meeting. And upcoming though, on March twentieth, we will be having our meeting on AI. So if anyone is interested in that, it promises to be really exciting. So please come. I think it'll be really interesting. Uh April fourteenth is Bill Banks, and that's, I'm glad that we got him to come in. And May fifteenth, we're having the English department update, because we had them come in a while ago. But some of the board members who are currently on the board now were not then. And we just want to see what the English department is doing, because we had some issues with language and uh the grades at that time. And we're just seeing how that's going and what books are offered for the English department. We'll be getting a list of those first, so we can sign up before that May fifteenth, kind of what we did for the social studies. If anyone wishes to review a certain book or something, you can sign it out and look it over and then come to a curriculum committee committee meeting on the fifteenth that we can discuss. So our next meeting is March twentieth. It's uh six forty five. And that's about all I have.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thanks, Chairwoman Hammer. And and I I have to say, I mean, I would, I think I would speak on behalf of the attendees to curriculum. Not that they haven't always been action packed, but um they they're they're just packed full of very, very good uh information, dialogue. Um you know, we get going and by eight o'clock, we could probably go on for another hour.
Yeah, and I think it's so nice bringing in the different departments and you get to put a face with a name. And you talk more with them, you know, and you you get to learn the people, who the people are. And um I always find them very enjoyable and enlightening. And I I think it is good if you're able to attend.
That's very helpful. And I I I would like to hear more from these folks about the peer mentor P E and maybe.
Oh, yeah.
Future, what, if we can expand that into. Expand that.
Yeah, you can always suggest whatever. If anyone has a department they're interested in or a certain focus, you know, just mention it. And we'll set up an agenda and keep it um in a line that will go down and make sure we hit them.
Not to backtrack to the peer mentor, but do we know how long that's been going on?
Yeah, yeah. Uh Emily and Mary started to have those conversations last spring and uh have. The one clue that I didn't give on was um they're to communicate since the first year was on there as a communication here and how we were scheduling it for second semester. Actually, Emily and Newton have had to really think on the fly again and they took everything in stride. They figured it out. They told us not to let it happen again.
So you're not going to let that happen again, right?
Right, exactly. Yeah. So adaptive P ran Jeremy Miller at the helm for a number of years. And then um when he exited last year, Emily was able to take over and then like I guess bring in a new like Newton is an absolutely fantastic higher pressing coach. So they got some second. This year and just a like top notch, high class guy to bring in. And like the stuff they're doing is beyond what I would have thought of if I would have had to bring up the class by myself.
We could, we could clearly see in that curriculum meeting just how excited he was about talking about P E. I mean, P E.
They're doing the.
That's awesome.
Our gym is full of gear right now and that and all that.
And that's, that's fantastic. Yeah.
Do we, the other thing I was going to ask about that is, is this, is this exclusive to Arrowhead? Has has everybody, anybody heard of something like this somewhere else?
There's probably, there's like di- different iterations of how they do that. So everybody does like adaptive P a little bit different. And I would say in Waukesha County, everybody's kind of on a similar journey of trying to improve their adaptive P E units. Um some schools, I would say that we're unique in how much planning and effort is going into working with the other students, like the the students without I E Ps that are in the class. I think that that is something that's unique in terms of um prepping them before class, having them design and come up with ideas for what they're going to do with the students, doing something like that walk and talk pieces. And then those like those questions afterwards are like really high level questions, like those. I I I can't tell you how like, how frontal of like the the rigor that they're putting into a class like this. That could be a class that's just like, come be friendly with students, you know, and but no, they're expecting a lot of. So I think that that's different. I know like a lot of like places will they just do inclusion and have kids happen to be together. But again, what Emily and Mary have done is just, I think, it exceeds what I've heard of. I can check in again with other people to see what they're doing.
I think, I think you really touched on that, though, of of just the the really kind of thinking beyond what maybe they are used to in in problem solving for themselves. But now you're thinking about another human being who is is maybe going to rely on you a little more for their activity and and what they're doing. And uh that's pretty huge for a a high school student than to be practicing.
Oh, yeah.
And especially, just saying, um but no, I I just think that's fantastic. Um and especially some of these students who either A have been with some of these other kids. They have gone to school with them from kindergarten, so they know each other. They're comfortable with each other. That's a huge help. And B, maybe they didn't go to school with some of these kids. So it's a learning um piece for for both the peer, um you know, the the mentor and and their their peer. I I just think it's fantastic.
The comments, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reroute us uh back to uh our co-chairman. Chairman Miller and Chairman Beniker, and uh we'll head into Finance Legislation Building.
We're actually going to start out with building and corals update, because I think that's first on the piece here. So Gerald, go ahead and take those over.
Yeah, and by all means, if um Brandon and Jeff fill in the blanks here. And I'm going to just kind, we have two months of carrying over here. We talked about the pool during both times, so I'm going to just try to sum it all up here. So our first meeting was on January twentieth. Um our director, um Mr. King, reported the initial pool assessment provided by Newman Pools, highlighting several concerns, um including water in the concrete and the pool windows in need of replacement. In addition to that, um a rest of being will require additional assessment by a structural engineer to determine the necessary repairs. And then, you know, Mr. King, he did share more information in the um in the February meeting, which he um discussed that um he gave an update. He said that at the main, the cost of the guys and repairs um from, I think this is what he's, he said, right?
It was speculated.
It was speculated that it would cost between three to four hundred thousand dollars. Additional expenses may arise, bringing the total to the range of maybe up to eight hundred thousand, with no guarantee that, you know, that will fix that problem, but there might be another problem that will occur. And um they are bringing in um a person during the spring break to do an assessment of, to get the actual numbers.
We had, at at that committee meeting, we talked about, you know, is there other vendors that could do that work, that assessment? So we reached out to three companies. We heard back from one of the three. Uh the other two didn't reply and the one said they could, they're not able to do that. So we are going to stick with grave. It's about thirty nine hundred dollars is what they quoted to do.
For the structural assessment.
For the structural assessment. So we've got a plan for spring break, or at least Bill's in the works of trying to get it set up for spring break.
And that's going to tell us potential safety issues or what what are we expecting out of that?
How we came to that three to four hundred thousand, maybe eight hundred thousand was, we put a hundred thousand into one small area of uh these type of leaks where the water was leaking into the pantry, getting into the rebar. Now we've just got a much bigger area to be assessed. And so we're, that structural engineer will give us a breakdown of what we're looking at.
Will he be just looking at that problem in isolation or will he be reviewing other things that could be?
I don't know the answer to that. Uh I I believe he's going to look at, we know we have water coming into the concrete. So he's going to look at the structural, doing a structural analysis of the pool. Is it still, you know, how long can we function like this? You know, I don't know if he's going to look into the windows and things like that at the same time or not. So, okay, I can check on that and get back to you.
Okay, and I know um would that be, do you know, would the turnaround time is typically for that type of assessment?
I don't know.
Okay. Um so that's what's going on with the um updates with the pool. Um, let's see here. And then also, we were talking about the um. I did not see that. Oh, yeah. And then Bill reported on the current status of the maintenance um facility um project. And he's working on an option to reduce the cost for this building. Um modified request proposal will likely be sent out as cost saving options continue to be explained. Um any, so that was um conversation in the January meeting. And then we also talked about the um. We had Mr. Harrelson and Mr. Griffin from the Town of Merton present a request for the school or to grant the Town of Merton a stormwater easement. Um no, Tommy's been currently exists as the three Arrowhead Stormwater Ponds um in the current um easement rules. This request is based on the Town of Merton being unable to be in in compliance with the D N R regulations and the community agreed to move forward with this to the full board discussion and action, which we would take today. Is there anything to elaborate on? With the easement?
No, I'm not put those guys through the wringer. I I don't think there's really a whole lot of upside or downside for the school to do this. You know, they're just trying to meet their D N R quota and we're grandfathered in in the fifties, so I don't see any risk to approve it.
Friendly partnership.
I don't see any risk to not approve it.
And we know that any new project that would, you know, entail a retainage pond is going to automatically have the easement that's in the new D N R laws. These are just predating that. It helps them meet compliance. It's a matter of if we start dumping things into those ponds, then they're going to come here and tell us, don't do that.
So maybe we pause on that um action item and give the rest of the.
Yeah, so uh the January finance update was basically the initial budget that um we put together for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. That included um essentially the assumptions on cost, revenue, pupil count, etc. And we basically gave Jeff the thumbs up that we're in agreement with his expertise there. And he's going to use that as a basis for for budgeting. Anything to add there, Jeff?
Yeah, so like you said, we're, we were um agreeing on the assumptions that we would use in the budget forecast model, real next year's budget. Now, those assumptions are going to change as we learn more of the state budget. And as I'm, I've just heard recently that it's probably not going to be done by July. It sounds like it's going to be a late budget year.
Okay, and then the finance update for uh, the following month in February was basically an audit. So representatives from our auditor presented our twenty twenty four audit. Uh, passed with flying colors without any um, major issues. So very good results. And that's really a testament to Jeff and the team's hard work and balancing our budget and making sure that our finances are in alignment. Um, you know, I think it's especially important in this time, this day and age where we're seeing schools like MPS have very, a lot of issues with their audits. And um, you know, a lot, a lot of misinformation in the public right now about budgeting and mismanagement of funds and the fact that we passed this audit with flying colors is truly. Testament to your, your guys' hard work. So thank you guys for, for all that work. Is there, for anybody that hasn't seen there, there is a press release about this as well. So go ahead and take a peek at that.
I was just gonna say, is there anything you can share with just the general public about the independence of this auditing companies?
I'll pass that to, to Jeff if he wants.
They're independent auditor. I mean, they come in every year. We do a preliminary audit in uh, late May, early June, and then we do a final audit uh, after the books are closed in. Late July, early August, and uh, they look at everything in, in detail and they're deep, you know, especially on our credit card purchases. Every. Purchase has to have a receipt, making sure that we haven't paid tax on things or. Any reimbursement, you know, is there any conflict of interest? So they're looking in detail at every expenditure. Uh, making sure that what we're reporting to the DPI for what we've spent in every category is appropriate and accurately recorded. So that's, that's their job. We pay them to do that every year. Um, to keep us, uh, we know what we're up against, so we make sure we do. To get everything right upfront, so we don't have to fix anything later.
Yeah. Speaking of, can I ask one more question? So speaking of expenditures, earlier we heard um, that up to date currently, we've spent nearly a million dollars with regards to the referendum. Is there any uh, reframing that you can share with regards to that number?
I have no idea where that number comes from. Um, we paid EUA thirteen, fourteen thousand with its. With uh, their additional expenses, but thirteen was the contract. And then we would pay for any supply expenses related to it. And that was like thirteen thousand or fourteen thousand twelve, uh, maybe slightly above that, but. Um, I don't know how we can get to a million dollars on our spend on this. Um, I'd love to see those numbers and how we got there.
Mailing materials. I know, but it's something, you know.
If we touched a hundred thousand, that would be a lot. So to get it to a million, um, I, and it doesn't show on our books that we've spent that kind of money.
Well, and with regards to our books, Eric, you know, I think our board um, pretty much takes it for granted that we're going to have. A very successful outcome to our audit every year. Um, can you tell us how many years? We've been really, uh, we have flying colors now for how many years we've experienced this?
It predates me. Um, I've had clean audits ever since I've been here. I've been here for six years now. Uh, Steve Quebec, he was here for twenty nine years, did a great job. Um, always had clean audits. We are, are. Our bond rating is a double A one, which isn't, I think there's only. Thirteen or fourteen or sixteen schools in the state that have that or better. Um, and that just has to do with how we manage our budget. How we. We don't go negative unless it's a planned uh, use of fund balance for a project. You know, we, yeah, it's been a lot of years since we've, that we've had good clean audits.
So our next meeting is April first. Um, we're not having a meeting this coming Monday. There's just not enough topics to, to fill off a meeting. So. The next meeting will be April first. Should have a good agenda in front of it. And then um, with that being said, I will make a motion to approve the land easement as, as provided by administrations.
I'll second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, um, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Then motion carries.
As one additional, not, not that this is a, an advanced legislation meeting, but as one additional future agenda item, maybe even for April first if it's possible. Um, could you potentially, Jeff, have um, broken out what we have spent so far with regards to the referendum?
Sure.
Just so that's available to the public if they need it.
Definitely, maybe include that in the board update.
Okay.
Yeah. April first is election day, so I'll be there. I'll be working the. Yeah, I'm chief election inspector. I have to be there to make sure the machines are working properly and everything. I stay till the bitter end. Sometimes it's nine, sometimes it's ten. Thank you. It's a long day, but it's fun.
Yeah.
Yeah. You get lunch. Yes, and dinner. Thank you very much.
For bringing the uh. Uh, anything uh, from our personnel chairwoman and member Angela?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, at this time, we are in the process of. Uh, scheduling, coordinating a meeting with teacher representatives to be scheduled. In April, either um, twenty second, twenty third, twenty fourth in that range, three o'clock meeting. Um, it has not been confirmed yet, so I will have to get back to you on that date.
Super. And we're close to landing on April twenty fourth.
Starting the twenty fourth. All right. That's a Thursday, right?
That is a Thursday.
Okay, great, and I can make it. Like muscle on.
So I can reach out to the, the bargaining unit uh, themselves, but I'm gonna present that to you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Chairwoman Angela, and on to Chairman Ferris with policy.
Thank you, Madam President. So in March, we had a very coveted snow day and uh, I enjoyed it. I celebrated not having to be at a board meeting. It was, I know it's the only, as an adult, you don't really get snow days. So that was the. Snow day I got to celebrate. So as a result of that, we do have minutes going back uh, to February. So in February, our meeting was really all about, uh, we have a lot of um, discussion and action items today. Uh, it was really all about updating uh, Neola policies on Neola recommendations that they do for all their schools. Uh, I'm not sure if uh, Conrad, if you wouldn't mind giving a short summary of each, so the board can have a reminder since it has been a little bit. On each topic, just a, just a little quick, if, if it's not too much to ask, a quick uh, summary of what we're going to be voting on. Discussion and action.
Um, I think he's asking for the ones that are half motions.
Yeah.
And that would, would was the ask Chris.
It's the, just a summary of, uh, so we can go piece by piece. There's a discussion and action to approve Neola policy. Update thirty four dash one uh, recommended changes. And if you just can give just a quick, hey, this is what we're doing on this one. This is what we're requesting on this one.
So like all of these, like each individual concept?
Yeah, just, just, just a, if it's a quick summary, if that's a possibility.
I, I can't do it off the top of my head.
No.
Other than this is what Neola provides and this is what we're putting out to the community now, so that when people have any kind of questions. Just, you know, if we had off, um, wrong conclusions that um, were being made the last time around. Um, all of the changes that Neola puts out are based on either legal changes that have happened with the local state law or federal law or a court. Order, court rulings, court cases, judgments. Um, everything they give us as updates is, there's a legal reason for it. It's about minimizing the district's risk. And so they wanna make sure our policies put us in the best possible position if there were any kind of um, legal issues. So when you read these quick overviews. Um, they give a great example of the type of reason for the change. Sometimes it's as simple as changing a title. Um, just making sure that language that's in the policy that it should be there, maybe it shouldn't be there. Um, they are always looking at their policies and want them to be current and um, efficient. And so um, every single one of these is recommended based on Neola's um, reasoning, based on giving us the most protection we can get.
Actually, that's, that's plenty. Like in, in thirty four, so on thirty four dash one, they had, we struck, struck some language. You know, in each one of these, we went through it in the, in the meeting and uh, and the board members that were here had called up questions. Nothing was changed from what Neola had suggested. Um, but we can go piece by piece. I'm assuming that all board members have read these changes and are familiar with them. So we can just go, I'll turn it actually back over to our president. Uh, to go item by item on discussion and action for each policy.
Well, so at this point, um, we're gonna just have read the recommended changes. I'm looking for a motion to approve. Uh, the recommended changes in the language to policy update thirty four dash one.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Any further discussion, Ms. If not, all in favor, say aye. This motion carries. And Chairman Ferris, did you uh, intend to discuss anything further relative to? The summer or interim school?
Uh, no, no, Madam President, thank you. I think we can just go through each one piece by piece and just ask if there's any. Any questions for discussion and action. As during the meeting, everything was approved.
Okay, uh, thank you for the clarification. So at this point then, I'm looking for a motion to approve new policy. Two four four zero point zero one, summer interim school attendants.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? This motion carries as well. Next up is. Uh, a motion to approve new policy two four six four, advanced learning instruction, quote unquote, gifted and talented.
I'll make a motion. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. And last up is a motion to approve new policy eight one two five consultants.
I have a question about this one. Uh, sorry, I wasn't at the meeting. Um, and I forgot to ask this between now and then. So Conrad. I, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, but how is this different than a previous policy or is it, this is, so this is a new policy? And is this a Neola recommendation?
This, this is a new policy. Uh, this is a spinoff of existing policy sixty three twenty, I believe. Um, and this one very specifically uh, grants approval to the superintendent uh, for contracting of. Uh, consultants. Um, it refers to uh. Uh, sixty three twenty in the maximum amount uh, that's allowable. Uh, for the superintendent to um, contract up to, I believe that is twenty five thousand dollars. Um, prior to gaining board approval. Does that sum it up?
Is that in one, like one? They'll swoop of a consulting fee or is, what if it adds up to that point? Do we have visibility?
It is very non-specific. I mean, I, I've read sixty three twenty and um. Sixty three twenty just says, you know.
I would interpret.
Purchasing.
It's twenty five thousand, if, if that contract's gonna be a twenty five thousand or more, we're gonna bring it to the yeah for approval.
Okay.
That was my understanding.
And I don't, I don't even know the case where I would do this.
Yeah.
I, I don't remember the genesis of this policy. Do any of you know?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I think they literally just, just broke, they broke it out. Uh, cause I think it was never really specific. Policy consultants. It was just a general purchasing policy offered by Neola that was sixty through twenty. And I think they decided they're, yeah, it was part of their existing. I think it's sixty.
Update from sixty three twenty.
But it, but it refers back to purchasing, which is sixty three twenty.
Okay.
In the, in the, in the maximum amount.
The only ask that I have, and it may, may have become a policy or maybe just a separate um. Request we have for you, Conrad, is to just understand what kind of, you know, on a quarterly or biannual basis, what kind of consultants we have on staff. We're hiring just to understand who's here and what we're paying them.
Sure.
I, we grant you full authority to do what you need to do as far as the policy goes, but we, I personally would like a little more visibility to who's here. Board nodding their head would probably agree with that.
Yeah, this, this did come up as a discussion point during the policy meeting.
Yeah, and it was like Bill Banks we talked about, like, what is he paid and how many times does he come and that type of thing.
Yeah, I would wanna do the same thing, brother.
Great.
I'm not really even excited about this.
Consultants that we use, like Phil Banks. Yeah, Eric Larson through CISA.
No, Mary's a specialist. Jen Thompson's in the table for half a day this year.
Isn't that part of our CISA contract? So we can, we can put something together.
Is there something through B and G's or?
It used to be, well, what would we call that agreement that we? It's kinda like the consultant.
I wouldn't call that, I'd call that a, a maintenance.
How long would we even have a consultant of above ten thousand dollars?
Townsend, Townsend, she was doing wildly with us.
She was doing a lot.
Okay.
I guess it's, yeah, something to.
It may be worth.
So um, Chairman Ferris, uh, okay to table this policy until a future?
I'd say yes, yeah, if uh, um, Kate, if you don't mind adding this to the uh, April meeting again and, and just to. Revisit it and, and maybe even talk about a different uh, monetary amount um, with regards to. Yeah, um, that'd be great. So we'll table that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, so we've wrapped up our part from March fourth um, as well. Uh, for policy?
Uh, yes, correct.
Okay.
So we'll move on to, to March. Um, March, we did not have a snow day on that meeting, so.
A little bit later. Um, so we met on March fourth. Um, it was a great meeting. Thank you all who attended, which is basically all. Um, I really appreciate it. Um, we had a very robust discussion on um, all topics, uh, the biggest one.
For the first one being WASB with regards to um, ideological alignment with the board and discussing about big picture. Um, what our thoughts were on uh, meaning a um. Somebody that wants to continue to invest in, in WASB. Uh, this came, came to pass um, following the convention that happened. In January, February, um, as many board members wanted for that meeting. Um, I know we had talked late last fall with regards to the idea of WASB and then what. You know, there are several board members that had, you know, asked me, you know, what's, what's the value? What's the value equation on this? Um, the, uh, we also heard from administration um, discussing the idea of the, the value. Uh, that is added from our attorney Bob Butler through WASB, who was obviously a great value added and uh, we tasked. Uh, superintendent to, to go back and see if there's a way that we can carve out. And so for a future agenda item and a future meeting, we are gonna discuss the idea of potentially, if that's a possibility carving out. Legal services from our attorney Bob Butler, so.
We're working on getting a meeting. Floated the idea, but I don't have an answer from.
That sounds good. Thank you, Conrad. Uh, so that's, that's still to come. Um, so a lot of, a lot of different pieces that we, we discussed. The next, the next piece was really just the idea of this board. Um, as we were talking about affiliations with different groups. Uh, several uh, groups that exist uh, were floated as ideas that potentially um. Could be brought to another future agenda item. We probably won't do this in April, but in the near future, we'll discuss the idea of. Um, what FAIR represents, what SBAE represents, what Americans for Prosperity eighteen forty eight project and uh, the Will Law Group. Represents uh, as far as affiliations and in what this board uh, aligns with the community and where the value is. Uh, with regards to those groups. Uh, so that, that discussion began. Uh, we'll continue to have that discussion. Uh, with regards to affiliations of, of groups. Then we moved on to our principal, Adam Kurth, with his update on the implementation of how the cell phone policy is going. Seems like it is moving along very well in general in classrooms. There's, there's a, seems to be a very strong, I mean, he came up with a very beautiful PowerPoint that he put together. A strong adherence by a, a good portion, a good majority of the teaching staff. There is some that we still want to have him circle back and, and discuss some concerns with, with regards to desire to keep it moving forward. We also heard a lot of great insight and input from all board members. Brandon bringing up the Jonathan Haidt article that he had shared with the group, something that's worth discussing. Also, Mr. Kurth discussed bill that's being brought forth in Wisconsin. So there's a lot, this is a moving, this is kind of a moving piece right now. But it was good to have the initial interim. First of all, I would like to thank our administration for putting for well over a year now, a renewed emphasis on cell phones in the classroom. I think it's really impacted the, the end product that our students are getting. And so we'll continue to monitor this and continue to discuss it moving forward. There are a couple of topics we didn't get to, and I'm actually kind of glad because we're going to have an AI discussion in curriculum, so we're going to be able to balance that and policy shortly right after. And so it's going to be aligned perfectly. Really appreciate that. So we'll have that as, you know, with regards to the pedagogical approach from the school. And that said, there are future agenda items that we will be working on for April. And that is going to be April eighth, so it'll be a week after the election.
So, so you can.
So for the date on here, it says March third on the top. Was that March fourth? I thought we had the meeting.
Yeah, I think you might be.
We should probably.
The minutes save.
March third.
But then the sheet tells the third, so we can fix them.
Thanks.
Thanks, Kate. Okay, thank you so much, Chairman Ferris. A lot going on. Next up is other reports. And the WASB twenty twenty five state convention updates is listed first. We had a great level of participation from board members there, I think in large part because of the additional assessment kind of underway with regards to our affiliation with WASB right now. So I thank everyone for being down there and participating and trying to best understand what the state convention looks like and, and offers. So I'll kind of just leave it up to the board for comment. I think everyone enjoyed a number of experiences down there and if anyone, anyone wants to start and just kind of share with your, your experience at the state convention in January.
Yeah, I know.
It's been a long day.
Well, we did in policy.
I was like, hmm. But I shared my sentiments, so.
Yeah, I did too. And, you know, I attended two, I don't know if you'd call them lectures or presentations. One was on character that I found kind of interesting. And Sue, I was going to give you a handout on that, but I can't find. I'll, I'll keep looking for it, but.
Sometimes, sometimes they stay linked if you go back to.
Okay, I could try that, but I think I have it somewhere at home. But it was, I just wanted to see what they had in regards to character as it related to bullying and types of things like that. I think our kids, when you see the kids come in and do these presentations, you're like, oh, my God, you're just blown away by how professional and full of character they are. So I don't know how this would apply as much to our school, but I just thought it was a very interesting topic. And one of the things I found really interesting was the present, the presenter who was kind of dry. He just said that today less parents, he had people raise their hands that they knew what the golden rule was, and hardly anybody did, which was terrible, you know? It was like the old ones, like myself, or the gray hairs. And then they said they had some statistics, like eighty eight percent of parents think civility in the United States is getting worse. And parents support promoting character in schools. And then they were talking about how you can establish almost like a curriculum, which includes character building. I don't even know if we'd need something like that here, but I'll, I'll give you that handout once I find it, Sue, and you can just review it. But I thought it was, that was fairly interesting. And then I also signed up for the public records, open records request one. And I don't think I learned anything that I didn't already know. And I saw you sitting way up in the front, but I got there late. Because we had to go through the screeners and we came back after lunch and there's like at the airport, it took forever.
It was pretty slow.
Yeah, so. Well. So, yeah.
So it's Amy you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I didn't think I learned much that I didn't already know from that. So that was, it was okay. And then the presentation, the main presentation with the guest speaker, the guest speaker, who, whose name I've already forgot, he was really good, though. And I thought that was worth the money to see him. And Jill Underley was, in my opinion, horrid, but that's my opinion. So, but the guest speaker was really good. He was very energetic and. Tell me something good.
Yeah.
Yeah. He always said, you never greet anyone anymore with how are you? Because you've got a standard reply. When you greet someone, you should say, tell me something good. And it gets them thinking. You'll be surprised how many people can't think of something right off the bat.
You have to say it or you go to.
And then you really get it, yeah.
Presentation was really good and the student bands that they had at the beginning were really good. The rest of it was kind of like expo, where you just walked around and looked at different booths and I don't know, it was okay. It's, you know, I didn't think anything too amazing or anything like that.
Yeah, that was.
But for, for the money, I thought it's a little overpriced.
I, to kind of build on what you were saying, one of the sessions that, that I attended and had the privilege to sit next to our own Mr. Gross was around school finance. And I thought, great, this is, this is perfect because A, who couldn't use a refresher on school finance? No matter how many times you, you go through it, except for Mr. Gross, he's, he's fine with it. But B, sitting next to him, he could probably translate for me, which is hopeful. But really, A, they taught me nothing. And they kind of, I think, either misspoke or were missing some things. And a couple of times, I kind of deferred to Mr. Gross and he kind of went, hmm. He had this look on his face like, I don't think that's quite right. I thought, darn it. He should be up there teaching this session. You should have been up there teaching that session.
I don't remember which session. Is that the school finance one oh one?
It was right after lunch, yeah. It was one oh one. Yeah, you should have been up there teaching that session.
I used to do a pre-convention workshop on school financing, talk about revenue, state aid. But there's a new crew working right now and they're doing a good job.
It was, no, it was confusing. And, yeah, I just, you know, when they would try to, when they were making a statement, then I'd have to look to him and go, what does, what does that mean? I don't, I don't get, what do they say? It just, you know. We have, I think, a better resource here in our own Mr. Gross, so, yeah. So there was that. The other session, hmm. Yeah. Wasn't worth the money, unfortunately.
You know, Conrad, do you have a date of when you guys are meeting with WASB with regard to that discussion?
We're gonna try to set that up. I have it on my desk, so after the meeting, I'll run and get it. We can see what dates work for everybody.
Okay, okay, cool.
Any, any feedback from your experience, Tony Wences?
I did that, I'm eating. Nothing more to add.
Okay.
What more to say?
She's a good driver downtown.
You know, was covered in, in, in a, of the policy discussion. So it was separate and apart from, I think, the educational component and some of the display opportunities to, you know, pop in and see things relative to education. Of course, the General Assembly happened. And so the resolutions that had been before the board in the past were voted on. And again, that's included in the policy discussion. Approval from the General Assembly on a number of resolutions that run contrary to how our board would have voted, or, or did vote, as it were. So I think that's really about it. The only other WASB doing happened today. And so I'm hoping that, that both, member, both, Blachee. And member Woods, who were both in Madison today. We've had a long, busy day. They were up there representing educational interests in Capitol Day. So I'm, I'm hoping that you might be able to kind of provide an overview on your experiences today.
Yeah, so today WASB had their Capitol Day. Much different environment today than when I was there two years ago. Two years ago, I actually found it very unprofessional on how the members of people in the audience handled themselves. Today was much better overall, I thought. So they started with opening remarks. So really, what is Capitol Day to them? How should we engage with the members that we're meeting with? They did have a four-person panel, two assembly and two senators, for us to be all here from their sides of different questions that were already predetermined. Then they went over the governor's budget that he is putting forward. We then had lunch with the members that were in our district. So people from the Arrowhead District and Peter Schools that attended, it was Lindsay, myself, with the superintendent from Merton with us, two members of their board, and then one member from Stone Bank. And then this afternoon, we actually ended up meeting with four representatives now with the district lines being redone. We've actually got two senators now and two assembly people that oversee the Arrowhead District. So we've got a few more, a little bit more outreach to do. I would say the biggest topics really brought forward was WASB was talking about adding additional funds for special needs. And during the panel discussion, that was really bipartisan agreement that both Republicans and Democrats are both seeing that. Including, I believe it was a Mark Hatt poll that said that both sides of the aisle of Ruffers, constituents also see funding in that. So they're, so they're gonna try to move that line. They didn't say exactly how much. There's anything tossed out from it being where it is today to sixty percent funding. So that's kind of to be determined. The bigger surprise that came out of the panel was Representative Kitchen from the Door County, Kewaunee County area, mentioned during a real quick snippet, potentially more funding for schools that want to do consolidation. This being looked at both from unit school, schools as well as rural schools, where maybe the enrollment isn't making sense to keep them as individual schools anymore. So the last time they offered this was in twenty nineteen, we found out. So this ended up being a talking point, especially in some of our discussions where we are also with the Hartford School District, because they overlapped us a little bit, as well as Jefferson School District overlapped us a little bit. So they were in some of our meetings with our representatives. So as I say, those were kind of the different things that way. Twice we did hear in two offices today, funding being at, at cost to continue. So not increasing or decreasing or changing anything from where we are today. I don't know if that's going to end up being a negotiation tactic, because we know we've got a long ways to go before we get to the actual budget. But that was brought up into the offices. So we were in Chris's office today, we were in Barbara's office and Cindy's office, all three of those, we did meet with staff only. And then we ended up meeting with Representative Jim, who is new and has all kinds of fun energy, which is always kind of nice, because nothing's tainted yet. He even threw out the idea of redoing school funding and.
Just wiping it out.
Yep, we're just gonna start all over.
Wiping that formula. I was like, I like you. Heyo. Does he sit on the education committee?
He does not, as I say, unfortunately. He's also, again, brand new to it. He has a lot of enforcement background. And is pretty energized and saw there's a lot of challenges there. So those were kind of my notes. If there's something you want to go ahead and add?
No, you did a great job. It was really interesting. Being appointed in June, for me, it was a really great learning experience. It was also really refreshing to hear like that the finances are an incredibly difficult knowledge base to gain your knowledge around it, because it's so complicated, it's so complex. At one point, one of the senators, and I can't remember his name off the top of my head, but he had everyone raise their hands for how long they had been on the board. And you could see like within five years, the, the hands dropped, right? And so it's the continual saga of educating yourself on how the finances work. And it's because it's one of the biggest pieces to our, our schools. So I listened a lot, I learned a lot. But I, I found it extremely helpful to.
Yeah, I would say probably a third of the room were one year or less, when they actually asked them to put up hands. Where I would have said, two years ago, when I was there, it was probably two thirds of the people that were there were ten, fifteen plus. So very different change in the space.
You think that was whether more civility this time?
I, that I'm not sure. I would say the panel speakers themselves also handled theirselves a little bit more professionally than I'd say last time around. But the crowd definitely was much more, take it all in, listen, take notes, things that way instead, which was really refreshing.
Thank you both for going. Yeah, appreciate. So, so just the way I understand it was Catherine Dietrich, Duco, and before?
I am probably gonna.
Thank you.
So yeah, one of the things Lindsay and I talked about is one session is done, maybe in summer, seeing if we can get all four of them here. That might be a different discussion or different book, it not just being the two that have all worked together as always, and see what that looks like.
I have talked to Barb, we had tea. And she's absolutely one hundred percent into coming to meeting to sit down with us and just talk through things. So I feel like that's a really great thing. Lots of work to do. But then also thinking outside the box beyond finances to, Lynn and I having a conversation today of what are other things that we can partner with them on beyond finances? So.
Any ideas there?
We can, our brains.
Just sitting down with them and picking their brains on what projects that they have, you know, school safety or something like that. I, I have no idea what their focus areas are, but it would be nice to just get to know them and a little bit more about what they're interested in. I know that Representative Dietrich is really interested in special education. I know that was a hot topic today. It makes so much sense, espe- especially with attracting and retaining talent in that area. Ron from Merton was an amazing advocate. I wish to talk like that man, because he was something else today and really just did a, a justice to our, our district in it, in a whole. So I was really proud.
And Barb Dietrich remains on education committee, correct?
Yes, she is. This is correct.
Okay. Okay. Well, gosh, thank you both. This is, this is like the data doesn't quit. this is like the data doesn't quit.
Yeah, let's just say the elevator on the way down to the parking structure, no one was really that jealous that we got a board.
Thank you both for going and representing. Really, really appreciate it.
Super thankful for the opportunity. Um, and then we'll uh, pop.
I think there's a meeting coming up in May, so stay tuned.
Should we all hear more?
I'm open, you know, if someone wants to take that seat, take the reins. I think we vote on that in like, May, right?
Um, yeah.
April.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So you're signaling something.
I want to put in a new policy that the first gets to, you know, pass.
Oh, the next person. Okay, um, new business, um. Um, maybe you shouldn't spend it in just a, a brief amount of time uh, trying to sum up uh, the Arrowhead High School District School Boards Assembly. Uh, there's a meeting held on uh, February uh, twenty seventh. Uh, that was intended for all board members within our union district. So as seven of our K through eights, in addition to the high school, uh, were extended invitations. I want to thank uh, Member Adsit, uh, who unfortunately isn't here tonight as well as uh, the President of Hartland Lake, Senator Tiffany Holly, uh, for uh, their coordination in uh, in helping me to uh, encourage uh, what I felt was a good attendance. Um, I think we ended up with eighteen people at the meeting. Um, there was representation there then from every district outside of Northlake. Uh, and um, uh, kudos to Arrowhead. And I think had, I believe, six of our board members present. So one more meeting in the evening, uh, but thank, thanks, I thank to those who attended. Uh, so the meeting was just kind of structured as uh, more than fulfillment forum. Initially, just to kind of provide highlights uh, of each uh, individual district and kind of update the group on what was happening within each of the schools. And uh, you know, so we, you know, learned a lot about um, you know, the fiscal health of other schools and some of the curriculum initiatives that were going on. Uh, and uh, other highlights, um, and transition to uh, what uh, as a group uh, we might be looking uh, to help each other with in terms of training needs. Uh, given that the purpose of the meeting really was uh, getting to know each other better and uh, hopefully, uh, you know, lending itself to greater collaboration and, and um, communication within our union district. Uh, so we had some discussion around training. Um, and then I kind of uh, evolved uh, into a number of kind of myriad uh, different uh, discussion items. So board members did supply a number of um, topics of interest for future meetings. Uh, we did decide that uh, we would be meeting again. I want to say it's May eighth, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe that's right.
And um, you know, to, to try and keep things moving forward, uh, and uh, continue interest. Uh, so I'll, I'll open it up again to anyone that was there. If you have anything else you'd like to add?
I just want to say that that's the first time that the boards across the union have gotten together, which I thought was really cool. So the fact that we're breaking bread and we're finally coming to the table. It's a really, really good step in the right direction. I just I had to say that because it's unreal that I feel like the, the sun is shining. I mean, it's not an easy road, right? But at least the initial start of working together to, we work better together.
I think there was a, a certain amount of um, surprise initially um, for uh, several attendees that this A, has never been done before. And B, hasn't even been attended. And so I think um, once everyone kind of got past the, oh my gosh, how, how has this never been done before? Then we started to talk about, okay, now that we are here and thank you very much for making this happen. What does this mean and, and what are we going to do? And um, so I was very appreciative of how many people did, did come. I was disappointed that Northlake um, didn't um, send anyone, wasn't able to send anyone. Um, hopefully they will be able to attend in May. I don't know. Um, but um, it was great to hear what some of the other schools uh, were doing because um, as much as we would like to, it's really next to impossible to attend other board meetings. Um, but um, also, God bless you. Um, it was also, I, I think you kind of, you know, when you're hearing some of the other things that are being done at schools, you kind of see how they are faced with different issues, being K twelve schools, being a one-building school, or you know, a smaller number of students, that kind of thing. Um, so um, I hope that um, we'll continue to um, be able to meet and um, talk about how we can, because uh, by the end, at the end of the day, those students come here. So we all have a vested interest in how those students are doing in K eight. Because then ultimately they come here. And we want them to be successful there, so they're success, successful here. So um, yeah, I was, I was very pleased.
For me, I'll just add that I thought it was great for the knowledge sharing, like both like, what are the strengths of each of the theater schools? What are their challenges? And just hearing that all the way around the room. And then the other part I thought that was awesome was the fact that it's an energized group that wants to get together and do things that we do have another date on the calendar. In fact, Ron said that today that he was very impressed to see that. Um, because this was a topic in between our sessions. Um, and that we want to create focus groups. If it's board trainings, if it's different topics that we think are relevant, um, it's not a group that just wants to sit and talk net with each other. We want to become a doing group.
Great.
I, I was unable to attend, but I was just wondering if the word consolidation was ever mentioned or? I was just going to mention that.
Yeah, there was a.
You came up.
There was a curricular discussion. I think that that was a good one, uh, to your point. Uh, because I think that there needs to be some alignment. Um, not, it, not with anybody taking any, you know, ownership on, you know, not being to the, you know, to a certain level. Um, but just to have that further discussion. But then I think there was also a fiscal discussion uh, with regards to consolidation and what that looks like. Uh, that was taken with different levels of enthusiasm, probably isn't the right word. Um, but it was interesting to me, um, how the boards, so that each, you know, representatives from each of the boards uh, basically discussed, you know, they're, talked a little bit about their school. And then uh, one of the, one of the things that was asked of them is how many students are in schools? You know, we had a, we have a school that's, is, is low, two hundred and forty kids. Um, and is that, you know, a, a strong fiscal use of, you know, taxpayer dollars for this district?
Is that viable?
Everybody is, everybody is obviously passionate about their own school in their own community. Um, but is this the right question? Is this the right, you know, thing to be happening at this time? And we're definitely, you know, it's kind of the new gear option. I know that we probably didn't want to go down that road right away, but it's, it's logical and we all get together to at some point have this discussion and continue to have this discussion. Well, I mean, as all districts, not all, but many districts are, you know, have financial challenges. Um, and uh, as you know, we're putting forth the, you know, this referendum for us, you know, it's, it's budding up against other districts that have referendums or will be having referendums and you know, and what's the, you know, what's the appetite and the, the, the tax impact for the, the district and what's the best use of our dollars? So it's interesting also to hear that there's potential for, uh, from one of the representatives you were talking about, uh, or something.
Potentially some incentives.
Additional incentives, so.
When it comes to the tax levy with what they could do to help offset, so I guess prior years, what they did was they had a five or six-year incentive where they would, and please let me know if I'm misspeaking or misquoting. Uh, where year one, the taxpayers would get X amount off with their bills or in order to try to make it, if you've got a high-spending district and a lower-spending district, trying to even out that playing field over a six-year time period or a five-year time period.
Yeah. So I mean, we have, we have one school that's as high as eleven hundred kids. Uh, the next highest, I think, is eight fifty. And then we have some that are, you know, two forty in the, in just, you know, low numbers, four hundreds, you know, so what's, you know, I think, I think if we're all gonna be honest with each other and come to the table and have open discussions without being territorial as boards on, you know, our individual schools, you know, what's, what's the right answer for our district? So I think we're gonna keep going down that road. I know we want to try to have Ron talk, because he's really very adept with regards to understanding um, consolidation and what that looks like. I mean, we're, we're, we're a board of nine. There's two open, you know, there's two open seats. Nice job. But just because we used to be districts.
Yeah.
And so we're representing those districts that already in the past had consolidated. Um, so it's time to continue to have that discussion.
So what was their biggest resistance of? Not consolidating, was it? Financial control?
I think it's pride. I think it's pride in their, in their school, in the achievements of their school, in their, in the teachers. And you know, I think it's all about, you know, hey, we have a great, we have a great school. We're, you know, and, and everybody in our union district is all competing for, you know, students with each other and with outside groups. So I think they're very prideful of, hey, we have, we're, we're ranked number one, we're ranked number four, we're ranked, you know, and, and we have a great school.
And they, they are. I mean, we we ha- are blessed to have amazing theater schools. I mean, they're all like ranked in the top. Which is great.
I would also say um, some of that discussion revolves around individual opinion and maybe not the opinion of the full board because of how the discussion came up organically. And that was something we talked about. If there's gonna be committees that are made on future topics, if there's gonna be a decision, take it back to your board, have a conversation with your board, bring it back then to the group in order to do that, to make sure that it's just not that one individual person's take on it too.
Sure. That's what I was gonna ask about. Is there anything actionable that you guys need board feedback on for the next meeting in terms of consensus? To go back on? Any? Was there anything, if you think, just that we all might not agree with?
Not at this time.
I think it's really about, I think the next meeting, i- if it works out the way that I see it in my brain, depending on how, you know, I mean, I think uh, Kim and Chris have kind of been the leaders of, of putting this together. Uh, and I mean, kudos to you guys both for really working hard behind the scenes to make this happen. For the first time, there's a board member there that's been in, on a board for almost thirty years. He's never, it's never happened. So, but I, the way I see it is I see it as an educational meeting for the next meeting to, to help all board members understand like just the idea of consolidation. What does it look like? What, how, who are the winners and losers, losers? What does that mean? And then maybe even some new knowledge from, you know, Kitchen or what, you know, maybe there's an opportunity for something like that to I mean, I think it's just about having the discussions right now, you know?
Well, one piece that I, that just came to mind, and this feels like we should take it to committee for sure. This discussion. Dive deeper. It's not a committee with a consensus that this is what the Arrowhead Board has agreed upon in principle as a whole. And we should start driving those discussions and forcing these other schools to do the same in terms of getting back to us in terms of consensus discussions, meaning if we sit down in committee and say, hey, we want to start driving the issue forward that a combined curriculum is something that we all want to look at as something for the future to vote on. If, if that's even possible, I'm just using that as an example, or consolidation, we need to start leading that charge. Showing consensus, showing agreement. To start forcing the hands of some of the theater schools to start at least talking about it.
Well, and I think it, if, I think it's a little more delicate than that.
I, I was going to just suggest, I think we're, we're uh, kind of an assessment, um, post-meeting assessment period right now, trying to understand the best route forward. And at some point, it was suggested that uh, potentially we find something um, that all districts would agree on. That might be a little softer issue that we can all collaborate, uh, feel successful, uh, communicate around um, and then move on to bigger and, and better things. Um, it was thrown out, in fact, your phone policy uh, was thrown out at the meeting, uh, suggesting that we were, you know, continuing to assess our own phone policy and that uh, there had been um, just general policies uh, fully developed by Jonathan Height that um, kind of have trickled down, meaning for uh, K through eights and their adoption. Um, I don't know that there was a huge response to that, um, as that was brought forward, but I think we'll continue to try and find common grounds on something where we can, um, you know, collaborate and, and uh, continue to work forward on. Um, frankly, you know, when the, the whole issue of consolidation was raised, it, it got a little touchy. And points in, uh, very strong, strong opinions, um, surprising at times. Uh, to the extent that there was a representative who wants school. And quite frankly, suggested that he, he wouldn't participate in the future. Uh, I think he, he pulled back around and he said, okay, I'll, you know, come to the next one, one more time. But um, it's uh, I don't know that we're at this point in a, in a driver's seat to be able to drive something uh, when it really is a voluntary participation. At some point, I think um, it's going to be a long-term educational process that in fact, uh, our own community uh, needs to understand much better uh, the meaning of cons- of, of, of a union uh, versus a unified school district. And, and uh, what does that mean? Look like uh, for educational impact, uh, what does that look like uh, on their pocketbook? Uh, and, 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 and what does it mean uh, to have this longstanding uh, union district that is high-performing? Uh, but is not highly collaborative. And, and so I, I think, you know, these are a lot of the things that we need to continue to explore and um, as we've said, maybe do it kind of delicately to try and encourage everyone to still participate.
Will there be any notes circulated?
Um, I'll tell you, somebody took excellent notes.
I think it's also interesting that there was a preliminary discussion of, you know, maybe even this is a future curriculum topic for, for you to have, you know, like for instance, the focus that, that, I mean, we're working on a bunch of different areas here through Conrad and his team. Um, but the focus of especially English, you know? And to have the, the freshman teachers discuss what they see from the theater schools and the different levels and what their suggestions are. And it would be, it'd be, it'd be interesting to have that kind of uh, option in a future curriculum, meaning to help us to understand as a board here to be able to disseminate that out to these boards that we're gonna be meeting with to say, hey, this is, these are the one, you know, this is who's, and maybe not, it's tough because there's a lot of personal, you know, it's a lot of pride in each, each group's schools. So, but where, where are the deficits? And what do those look like? And maybe being more strategical and more, you know, uh, surgical about what that looks like and what they can do and what they can bring back to their schools to help you know, rise all, you know, raise all boats. To get on the same.
Like one school is well-known for, all, all their kids come in, they're great at math. And another school is, all their kids come in and they're great at English. You know, and just some consistency.
And with all due respect, we've, we've often heard.
Yes, I know that.
That there's a lot of outreach that happens, uh, you know, between the departments, uh, to, to, you know, to and with our, our, our theater schools. But I guess, you know, I, the point being that perhaps, you know, from a board perspective, there's another way to try and find some similar alignments that kind of can augment what we do as well. So I guess that was, you know, part of the effort to, to try and get that conversation.
Yeah, and I, I only asked about consolidation because I thought, you know, eventually it's gonna come up because of what we're doing. But I didn't expect that to be the main focus point for quite a while yet. It's still, everyone has to get to know each other and you know, there is, like Chris said, that pride factor and years ago, when I was. Years ago, when I was on the board at Merton, we tried to consolidate with Heartland Lakeside. And it started out all warm and fuzzy and it then it kind of imploded and never happened. But it was a matter of pride and butting heads and whose board was going to be the board and who, which superintendent was going to be the superintendent? And then it just kind of fizzled. But that was a long time ago.
Uh, to your, um, point, um, Kim, when we started talking about like the, the curriculum and. And, you know, coming in at your possibly varying levels of things. Um, that's where, um, I think there was some commentary on, um. Well, I don't want this to become a, you know. So and so is doing better here versus so and so. That, that wasn't the point. The point is that we want. You, all of these, these are all students coming here eventually. We want them all to be successful. So what can we do to make that happen? It's not about who's doing what. It's how about let's all improve.
Yeah, undertones that, you know, to the competitive nature, which, which competition's good. We get that, but at some point, yeah. So again, thank, thank you, um, uh, all of you that were there. I, I think it was a. Productive first start and it was nice to know that we got another one on the books and hopefully we'll get more there. So. Uh, other board members feel free to come and it is open to the public.
Were there any, were there any other people there besides board members?
Yes, yeah, there were.
There were a few.
Yeah, there were community members.
Yeah, it's me. At six thirty, I believe.
Yes.
Well, thank you everyone for your contributions.
Probably in the library lab again.
Yeah, yeah, we'll probably be in the, the same room. Um, moving on, uh, unless anyone has any further comment, uh, future agenda items? Anything from the boards?
No.
Okay, if not, um, pursuant to his absence. I'm looking for a motion to move the board into closed session. So, uh, I'll second that motion. Uh, Ellen, baby, say hi.
Hi.
Thank you. We moved to closed session.
Great.